Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of February thirteenth of two thousand and twenty four. And with me today, I have Don Schwanke, Nen Flagel, Mike Steinis, our county supervisors, Lisa Smith is our county auditor, Bjorn is our IT director, Luanne is our executive assistant also back here, and Mary from the media is here keeping an eye on.
Hey, look at the new blinds.
First, yeah, look out the new.
I noticed those right off.
Yeah, they're really nice. But hey, now they can get some sunburn here on this side of my with this is first on our agenda this morning, and Mr. Todd Keeney, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Good morning. So the first item here is to go over or award the rock bids. So do we get a handout or something with that to show us what the bids were? No, you're right. We didn't do that. Oh, let me make comments. It takes a while to break habits, right?
Mary wants one too, Todd. We print stuff like that in the local paper.
I wish I'd thought to ask you sooner for your agenda. Got them based. Very nice. Did I get it? You probably should double check that to make sure that I have it doesn't that I have the right amount of money in.
Tell me what you got.
Nope, nope. It was right. They had a little issue with one last night when I left. But I see it's in. So yes, I have to correct you. I'll always listen to you.
Bear with us if you would for just a few minutes and we will.
They can't get it away and it'll be done by now.
I think it's taken.
Even I can run that.
One of the better ones I go to make a.
And we should have a policy where things get turned in on Fridays so we don't have.
I think it's on every agenda that we can.
Twice. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I don't want to see these in the trash later.
No, 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 we're gonna study.
I don't want you guys committing these to memory.
The circle.
That's why we need a copy. We don't.
I'm shocked that they don't have visitors here.
I was actually gonna talk to you guys about this afterwards. If you guys still want to be doing this in the board meeting, awarding this because there's, I mean, there's no requirement to do it this way, but I know you guys have been doing this for this way for years, so.
Well, what we did in the past was they opened them and then we looked at them and then we said, you study them and then you bring them back to us. So I guess if you open them and study them, it's probably the same fashion. It's just they're not open here.
Uh, yeah, so these are quotes. So the only what I what I was saying is that we actually got quotes for one inch clean this year. Normally, it's just road rock. So the one inch clean uh isn't the reason we add that is because of the reclaim work that we're, you know, going to be contracting uh to haul a certain amount of minimum amount of tons for one inch clean as well. So so the the one sheet I handed you about one inch clean, there's no previous bid to compare from last year. So.
So does this also diminish from the regular road stone that we would be using, or is this just an addition to?
So the one inch clean is in addition to, it comes out of the total rock budget.
Okay.
The road aggregate, um, that is what I would call the 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 minimums, but it's it's also there's road aggregate that we haul for spot rock. There's road aggregate. We're gonna haul for reclaimed rock too. So it's 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 together, but this is the minimum. We're gonna haul more than this. This is just the minimum.
Okay, so we anticipate uh that we are going to uh
You need a one inch clean.
We anticipate that we're going to reclaim about the same amount of roads and we're gonna make sure that the ones we did reclaim are 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 in worth of good shape for sure, but.
We're we're trying to do twelve miles. Um, so that's two miles more per year per district than last year. So we're trying to do twelve instead of ten. And we're also, I've talked to Rick and we're gonna tweak a little bit how we're doing it. When how much what we how much material we'll bring in for sure, because I think the guys will get too aggressive bringing too much what I would call dish material onto the road. Um, and then also, um, we're gonna probably stop August for, or excuse me, October first. That gives it a little more time to get compacted by traffic, so.
Well, yeah, I know we had some issues and everybody knows we had some issues with this frost cycle this year. They're coming a little early.
Was more the it's more the four inches of rain we got after fifteen inches of snow. That was more the issue.
But I went out last week on Thursday and Sunday and I drove a lot of those. I got some complaints on the roads coming out of Clinton County, north and south into Jackson that we reclaimed and they actually were driving pretty good. So as bad as they were during that actual time, to me, it seemed like they dried out pretty fast.
Well, that's.
Which is the goal. So, yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's kind of done its purpose, but we had that little.
Right. And it's just because of the lack of moisture last year that the dirt didn't get worked out of it. So it just kind of.
Well, there's a lot of factors. One, I think we were bringing in too much dirt and not a mixture of rock and dirt. So we were trying to be too aggressive. That plus it was probably too dry to get optimum compaction. And then we had, you know, what, rain for four days after we got fifteen inches of snow.
We had a lot of absorption into the material. So these bids that I'm looking at, these are what you're recommending or is what you decided on? Is that correct?
Yeah, so the contract amount is what we're contracting with each producer at at those quarries for the minimum to haul that a minimum amount. So for instance, like on the aggregate, road aggregate, we're not doing anything out of Ruby just because it's so basically so far away. If you look at the one inch clean, um, there's Ruby, Orange Door and Deckard that we're not contracting any, just because those quarries are positioned too far away from roads that we're gonna reclaim. So we're not contracting in there.
Sure. The travel time and expense would be yeah, that's all calculated out before this is decided though. Correct? Yeah.
Is there a dramatic change in price from last year?
Um, so like the one inch clean, we don't really have any comparison to, but the road rock, uh, so Bellevue Sand and Growl, they're basically their price last year was seven dollars and thirty five cents a ton. So they went up forty cents. River City Stone, their price was seven fifty five. They went up forty cents. Um, Wendling, a lot of their quarries went from seven eighty five to eight dollars. So that's only fifteen cents. And then, uh, Decker went from, uh, seven dollars to seven fifty. That's fifty cents. So Eden Valley went up forty cents. So it's it's a mixture. Some went up fifteen, some went up fifteen, some went up to forty, but looks like.
Decker's only seven dollars.
Uh-huh. Oh, Decker went down in price. Excuse me. They went from seven fifty to seven. They were seven fifty in twenty twenty three.
Good. So you need a motion to approve this?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion and a second to approve and award the rock bids as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so here's all the.
And that's also to authorize the chair signatures, correct?
Yeah, right.
Thank you. Not who I think I've asked this before. Do you want these quarries don't all have loaders, right? Because this is their price with.
If we load ourselves, we'll get a break. So this is a base price.
So I guess what what maybe Nen is asking, like, most of the quarries do supply a machine to load, whether we load it ourselves or whether the quarry loads it, but we don't have to supply a machine at the quarry to load.
No, I don't think so.
No, they're usually there.
Yeah, but we might have to load ourselves. If we load ourselves, I believe we get a we get a discount off of that. So but that's not shown in here because you don't know for sure whether you'd be loading yourself or not. So.
Well, some of the quarries are a little remote and it's not personnel there all day long. So.
All right. Um, next item is to, uh, uh, award the, uh, contract for the three hundred and eighty street, uh, assessment district paving. So I believe that was sent out ahead of time, maybe, right?
Yeah, 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 we got it. We got it.
They got one for two, that ain't bad. Uh, so we had this. That's, I mean, I was surprised. I'm very happy to see that much bidding activity. I mean, to get five bidders, um, for such a small job, uh, that's pretty good, really good, actually. So uh, looking at the resolution, so we, if you recall, we set up the assessment district for around two hundred and ninety four thousand. And you guys had approved a fifty fifty split of that. So our our estimate is really good. So we got three guys, three bidders below us and two bidders above us. So that our estimate, you know, fit right in there, which was good to see. So um, that's really good pricing. So what will happen is um, the assessment is based on the estimated cost at the time they dis- the dis- the district is established. So this will be, we won't change the assessment. It's still gonna be based up to two hundred and eighty four thousand. So what we'll end up doing is because as part of access, if you can recall, that road coming, you'll people will have to leave going to the west on that level B. So we will have to do some work on the level B, haul some rock and do some improvements because that'll be the only way in and out for a time being. So you know, whatever money the difference left on the table will end up spending probably to prep the 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 level B going west so people can get access while we're paving. So.
So that subdivision, is there a way they can get out to fifty two in a different part of the subdivision?
I don't know.
You're paving past that.
Right. So that when we pave, I think it's set up in two phases, that there's gonna be a phase where they can't go east. They're gonna have to go out to the west. And that's when we'll have to upgrade or improve the level B so we can provide a good access out. And then once that's done, um, they'll be able to get out that way. Once that pavement, that concrete reaches strength, they'll be able to get out to the east and then we'll be paving paving the west section from the drive, basically.
So there's actually two subdivisions, one's closer to the east and one's a little farther west. So uh, yeah, I don't know if there's that. I would hope there's enough room on the shoulder somewhat too, maybe to get access one way, but.
I mean, like with anything with some, there's gonna be an inconvenience of access that we're paving, so.
Um, do you have a resolution number?
Resolution number one zero one six dash zero two dash thirteen dash twenty twenty four.
Uh, along with that, so the so, I mean, we talked about some of those little bit during budgets at time too. So along with that, some of them paid upfront, is that stay in, is that word toward this contract or does it stay until um, pay in account or balance, you know, as far as in your budget or someone's budget until it's paid in full? Like, all of them are paid in full? Whoever the.
No, so I talked to the treasurer. Right now, the payments are all at the treasurer. The treasurer.
Right.
No money has been transferred to the secondary route.
Right.
So what she plans on doing is, um, I believe is that in September, the next tax collection, she's gonna take what she has collected so far because a bunch of people pay their full assessment upfront.
Yeah.
And then whatever is collected in September, because that's when these, they only pay the assessment.
Once a year?
Once a year, and they're gonna, and I believe it's in September when they do that. So transfer whatever she has to date, plus whatever she's collected, and then she will keep doing that each September until it's paid off, till everybody is paid.
We made that adjustment in the twenty five budget.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
So I I saw, I think, a hundred and I don't know, it was like seventy five thousand dollars in revenue coming in from this transferred to me for the for to the road department for the assessment district.
Okay, that's where I was going with the budget.
September payment, I think, the way that I saw it in the budget was close to eighty eighty five or eighty six thousand.
And something like that.
So we, because we needed to get it in so we could. Yeah, so we've looked at that. We've made that adjustment in the twenty five.
Okay, so that is revenue coming to the secondary.
That's that's what I was looking at. So we showed the expense for into twenty four and twenty five that we have back up.
I split the expense over two years. So we show in about half the expense in current fiscal and half in next fiscal.
Right.
So you're looking for a bid or a motion to approve lowest bid?
Yes. Well, yeah, mostly to approve the resolution, I guess, is what, and execute the contract.
The move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution one zero one six dash zero two dash one three dash twenty twenty four, um, referring to the low bid for the payment project on three hundred and eighty street to Chikpari excavating in the amount of two hundred and seventy three thousand, thousand, three hundred and eighty two dollars and approve the board's signature. All those in favor? Any further discussion?
I have a question. So the first one is approving the the resolution, correct? That's what the what the motion is on the day, correct?
Yes.
And then you're gonna come back with another motion?
The resolution says to execute the contract as well.
It includes all that, I believe.
This is bad. Let me read this now.
When do they want to start?
Can't talk to them until after they sign the contract. Can't talk to them about schedule until after they sign the contract.
So we'd like to have it completed in twenty four. All those in favor say, any further discussion? You okay, Lisa?
Yep, I'm, yep.
All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
And then right after you guys are done, there's a train district meeting here.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
At eleven.
Starts at eleven?
That's the public hearing.
Plan on being at the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Part for the whole family.
It's what? You guys have one gray district?
Three.
Three. We have like, I think there's like fifteen or twenty in Clinton County.
Lower, upper, money, hell.
And you guys, are any of them elect their own trustees? Are you guys all the trustees for each one?
They have their own trustees.
Really?
Yeah.
Every district does?
Well, I think they're all the same for all three. They're all in the same spot.
It's one big happy family. They have like watchmen.
So the district is all in one place?
Yeah.
Perfect.
We don't have them scattered anymore.
So they just have the meetings at like a family reunion or what?
Coming at eleven.
Were you at the one last year?
No, I was.
All right. So next on our agenda, are there any visitors or citizens um that would like to approach the board this morning online or in present? Seeing or hearing none? Uh, next on our agenda is Laura Carson's for the Jackson County Historic Preservation. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm actually not here as an ECI. Boy, I just have a, I have a day full of ECI. Well, thank you very much. This has been a fun way to start the morning. When you supervise, there's meetings for so much fun.
We have.
Well, that's good. I'm glad you're happy. So I'm actually here today representing the county's Historic Preservation Commission, which is different than the Historical Society. We're part of what's called the state's certified local government program. And we need to provide a report every year. So this um is the the recommended twenty twenty three report. So for last year, and then it also includes our work plan for twenty twenty four. Um, the certified local government program provides us with access to technical support. We're also eligible for grants. And it's it's a good benefit for us. We get that state support and then a technical network that we can also tap into. So reports there for if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer it. I do want to again extend our thanks to the change you made in the number of our members. We've been able to have a quorum.
We reduced that by five and we. Well, it's hard to get. Everybody's busy.
Well, we were down to six out of twelve, so we couldn't meet because we couldn't have one. We didn't have enough members. So we, again, appreciate that and all your support. I think the only lagging item you might have noticed is we are still waiting for Heritage Works to provide us with a report on the insane asylum. Um, and I will be in Dubuque today, and so I will see if I can swing by their offices and find out. They're over two years overdue and I just tried to, we'll try to resolve that and get back to you.
Okay.
But we do appreciate your support for that.
This is an interesting site and and we intend when we catch up here a little bit, maybe to um secure that a little better.
Because they did our maintenance approval up there.
Well, they've been fairly busy. So I, we talked about it, but they have not been up there. Um, so.
And we, uh, we appreciate that and we're happy to work with the with the maintenance staff and with the conservation department to try to secure funds for these uh historic structures too. So that's something that's part of our work plan.
I mean, that's one of these is it's tough, you know? I mean, budgets are tough and we're trying to build a new facility and and picks up old facilities and.
I I really love to leverage other people's money to help out. Yeah, I like to get those grants in and help us out. They're gonna go to someone. They might as well get. The county if we can. You bet. You bet.
So, uh, are we looking to pass something here as far as this local government annual report?
Uh, we need your approval. And then there is an elected official signature, which I believe you would sign as the chair. I think it's just a motion. There's no resolution or anything.
No.
No.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, work plan for twenty twenty four and authorize chair to sign the certified local government annual report.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve the uh twenty twenty three certified local government report and signature as required. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
We thank you and appreciate the work that you're doing and and your crew and all the help that you, hopefully you can move forward and.
Yeah.
We can all move forward somehow. Reasonably find it fiscally.
You bet.
All right.
All right, thanks. Good morning. Thank you.
All right, we're just moving right along. And next on our agenda is Mike Storm, our Jackson County Emergency Medical Service Coordinator. Well, that's a mouthful there.
It is. I used to say EMS, but.
Yeah, yeah. EM, oh, yeah, wait, I'm an EM, EMSC coordinator.
There you go. Uh, so what I've been working on the past few months, as Nen knows, in the EMS world is winter time is kind of education time for us. So we are currently hosting two classes, uh, EMR class, which previously known as first responder and an EMT class. So we're able, we got approval for both classes because last time I spoke to you, um, EMT especially, we ended up with six and we needed eight. So took a little talk with the NCC, but, um, we got approved to host that class. And then we have fourteen in our EMR class. So hopefully here in a couple of months, we'll have twenty new providers in the county, um, along with uh, continuing education opportunities for our current providers. I think sitting in our classes, we do our lectures via Zoom. They don't have to leave home and get their continued education hours that way. So I had a lot of people jumping in, especially uh, the end of March is when certifications are due every two years. So if they were due, God, but you know how that goes, Nen. Get gets it at the last couple of months of the two year cycle. So uh, that's going well. The EMR class is ending next week, actually. No, um, EMT class posted end of March. So um, that was taking a lot of my time during the war. Uh, so, uh, it's, well, I don't think we would have eighty percent of those people if it wasn't, however you're doing it, hybrid and skills in Jackson County, not traveling to NCC.
Sure. And do we have out of county participants?
No, we do not. Um, we we talked because we're, NCC was on that cuff. If we needed a couple more that to hold it, um, I did reach out to those and, uh, had other things come up that they didn't, um, participate or join in that. So all twenty between EMR and EMT are Jackson County residents. Uh, some were, most of them are, you know, previously on the service. We did have a couple that, um, actually joined services because of the class. So that's nice to boost numbers because everything I do is nothing if we don't have EMS providers in the in the counties. So.
Well, yeah, it's it's nice to promote that, but it's really, really nice to have participants to, uh, wanna do it and I guess volunteer pretty much, right?
Absolutely. I have I have one, uh, one individual that's taken, uh, EMT and firefighter one at the same time. So, um, pretty busy. That's three nights a week. And yeah, absolutely.
You know, and the way I look at it, and I was in the service years ago, a part of it, but the way I look at it, if you get to the EMR, sometimes they move on to the EMT.
Absolutely, absolutely. And a lot of these guys that are in the EMR, they're they're on the fire departments and non-transport. So, um, but at least get more of those providers there and, uh, you know, whether they're just out assisting with our transporting ambulances with whether it's just an extra pair of hands or being those, you know?
We need them.
If you have Andrew, so you have Lamah, it takes a little while for us to get, uh, transports to get there. So.
So am I correct in saying, Stormy, that, uh, it's okay if I call you Stormy right there?
Absolutely.
Probably been Stormy to me. Uh, it's correct in saying like the like the rescue squad or Bellevue Fire goes to most of the calls that EMS are called on?
Yeah, so it depends on your on your, um, town, how that runs. So in Bellevue, uh, Bellevue Fire, Bellevue Rescue goes to all the rural calls within the Bellevue Ambulance District. They started doing that because uh, you know, some of these farmhouse, as you get two people on the ambulance and try to get them out and maneuvering.
Manpower.
Manpower. And I don't want to have to get there with my transporting ambulance and then call for a fire and that's another ten fifteen minute wait. Whereas in town, we have the police department to assist and it's easier to call people for extra help. So um, they don't run in town. Now, Preston and Miles, from my understanding, is fire department is going out to any of their calls, whether it's in town or rural, um, simply to help out, lift assist and just be the actual pair of hands.
True, whether it be traffic control or manpower or lifting.
Whatever. Yep. And then communities like Ball and Moness, Lamah, Andrew, their first their first responders or their fire departments are going out, um, because of the extended transport time of the of the, um, transport ambulance. So um, help us working real real well. We have a a great EMS association. I don't know if you guys, um, realize we added Domer and Lost Nation, fire department out of Clinton County to our EMS Association because our, um, Jackson County ambulance serves their entire district as their transport. So it just makes sense that they collaborate with us and different initiatives that we're working on.
Nice. Always always best to include somebody and get their, if they have issues, they can bring them up and, uh, the longest coverage is that way. That makes sense.
With training and just good workflows and.
It 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 really does. Yeah.
Like that.
Yeah, I don't know how long it's been since Jackson County took over. Lost Nation was a couple of years now.
Oh, it's probably been.
Has it more than?
Been pushed in probably four.
Okay.
Four, almost five. We've always covered some of them, but we took over.
Took over the the bottom half of the, yeah.
So. And all in all, the position, I know.
All all is going good. Um, my personal, uh, education, I guess, working on too, is, um, uh, working through getting my ACLs and PALS instructors. So those are, um, certifications that paramedics, uh, are required to have, and that's recorded in my, uh, job description to be an instructor with those. So, um, working through that process, I gotta go to class and then get evaluated instructing classes before they sign off for me to do them individually. But, um, we'll have that done here in probably a couple of months. So.
I was working with the different departments.
Yeah, I I have no problems with, you know, is, uh, um, I wasn't able to attend our last EMS Association meeting because I had class that I was teaching and no one wanted a lecture over OB and having babies. So I couldn't get out of that. But, um, yeah, no, it's, uh, we're good. We actually signed, the majority of the department signed on to an affiliation agreement that um, the state required anyone that any agency that runs under a hundred calls affiliate with someone basically just as a kind of, you help me, I help you then. Um, the agreement that was signed on by the services has no financial legal ties to anything that will instill their separate agency. It's just kind of, we're gonna help each other out. And that's what we were doing at the association level. So um, so we processed through that, met those state requirements there and, uh, um, we're working through different, um, patient care report changes or online systems.
Yeah, I usually try to get to some of the EMS meetings. There's usually a conflict with other meetings that I have. But yeah, I appreciate, sure appreciate it. We all purely appreciate what, uh, what all our volunteers are doing and and, uh, and what you're doing to help out to train them. And hopefully there's always a good working relationship with.
Yeah, and I gotta watch what I say sometimes because I was talking to Al Mulhouse and I'm like, you know, whatever you guys need, I'm pretty much here for you, you know? He's like, well, we have pancake breakfasts on Sunday. I'm like, yeah, yeah.
Then you get to have some sauce.
I'm either to eat, how about that? So.
Appreciate it.
I'm just going well, I think, thanks for your guys' support.
Well, if you need something from us, bring it forward and we'll see what we can do and, uh.
Do you have the courthouse on the radar for like CPR teaching?
Yeah, so, um, the last, uh, safety manager, security meeting, right, there's two committees now, whichever one that was, the, the one that was originally in there, right, um, uh, the chief deputy reached out to me about, um, different trainings, possibilities and what they're looking for and so I'm working through him on the needs of the courthouse, so a- as they tell me what type of training, whether they want, you know, formal, full CPR training or just everyone gets hands-on, first aid training, training, stop to bleed is a big initiative, um, I was working a couple of months ago with, uh, Department of Public Health, so there's an initiative within our, our region of pushing stop to bleed classes, getting uh, stop to bleed kids, turn kids and stuff in schools and churches and public areas, so, um, obviously our public health is kind of minimum staff here in, in the county, so I helped out making contact with, uh, different organizations to get that grant funding to them, so.
Sure, appreciate that too.
So, and our safety policy, I believe we had something put in there that we're gonna do CPR for sure.
Yeah, I, I, that's why I figured CPR, it's more of the first aid, how much do we wanna go in, is it more like, like I said, the stop to bleed thing, or do we wanna go in the full, um, you know, shock recognition, heart attack, the, 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 the formal classes.
You know, it's one of the things that you just don't do it every day, so a little refresher once in a while.
Yeah, yeah, and, and then it's balancing that between, you know, everyone's time, cause I got class, if we go like the American Heart Association, you gotta watch the DVD and videos and it's gonna be a three, four hour class and I know that's not conducive to a lot of people's learning, so, um, and, and time schedule. Um, so I was working with, uh, I talked to Becky too, when we do the, you know, bloodborne pathogens, all those online trunks, you know, there might be some stuff on there too that people can do on their own time and then we can kind of do hybrid, you do, just like my EMS classes, you do the classroom portion online and then we'll come, I'll get the dummies out and.
Practice on the kids and the, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
A lot going through school.
I've been in touch with Jim on that and whate- whatever needs, we'll work, make a schedule.
Appreciate it.
Yup.
Yeah, so keep us posted if you need something and, uh, move forward.
Excellent, thank you.
I'm going.
Thank you.
Alright, Lisa?
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February sixth, twenty twenty four board proceedings. I've written my auditor's smith and authorizes publication of the official newspapers. So, second.
Motion to second to approve the minutes of the February sixth, twenty twenty, 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 twenty-four board proceedings as written uh, by our dismissed the publication of newspaper, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, aye opposed? Motion carried.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, thirty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. So.
Second. Motion in second to approve the claims as presented at four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, thirty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
I need a motion to approve setting a public hearing date for a fiscal year budget amendment on March fifth, twenty twenty-four at ten AM. Omo.
Second. Motion in second to set the public hearing date for a fiscal year budget amendment on March fifth of twenty twenty-four ten AM, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
As we.
Thank you.
As we plan out our budget, just remember, I'll try to attend via Zoom on the nineteenth of March, but I will be in San Antonio and I just don't know how that shouldn't be a problem, but.
Yeah, we're gonna have to start talking about, um, public hearings and, you know, that's the next thing we're gonna work through is the, the first public hearing and then the second public hearing and we're making preparations for the mass mailing to all Jackson County taxpayers. Um, that will go on. As required, yes. Um, so we're working through some of those details, um, right now.
And I don't recall approving those San Antonio trips.
I don't remember asking about it. Watching our sun shooting nationals, a trap.
Deal, we'll enjoy that. Okay, well, thank you, is that it, Lisa?
That's it.
That's it, Luanne?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, calendar this week. Um, eleven o'clock this morning, right after the meeting, we'll have the Green Island Drainage District's annual meeting, um, in here, hopefully for all of you. At four o'clock this afternoon is in Coca-Cola River Watership Management Authority Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. Uh, tomorrow on February fourteenth at nine AM is the NIN's turn on K M Q's Just Talk program. And at one PM, and it also has a zero to five in sixty minutes meeting by Zoom. Thursday, February fifteenth at nine AM is a H T F or a Housing Trust Fund meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom, also for NIN. And at six PM that night is a Limestone Bluffs R C and D meeting, uh, by Zoom for Don. Monday, February nineteenth at one thirty PM is a Waste Authority meeting for Mike at the transfer station. Um, at six o'clock that night, there's a Together We Build Steering Committee meeting for NIN and at six o'clock also is a zoning committee meeting for any of you that wish to attend that. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, February twentieth at nine AM and that afternoon at five o'clock will be a Conservation Board meeting, um, in Hurstville, I believe, for any of you that wanted to do that.
And at ten o'clock on Thursday is the website design presentation.
Correct, yeah, I have that in my schedule, but I, I just had a meeting at the courthouse.
Okay. And are you going to that?
Well, we're invited.
Yeah.
So if we're interested in what they can do, not that I will use it every day, but, uh, certainly the way it sounds, we need to look things over.
The only other question I had about Thursday the fifteenth was whether or not we wanna try and do a budget work session that day? We've been trying to do them every Thursday, but we had a couple of things, um, that meeting for one and it has to get through the housing trust fund, so I don't know what you think about trying to have a budget work session that, that day yet.
Do we need to? I mean, there's a few things we need to discuss.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's a few things that we need to, we need to tie up, yes. I mean, if you're gonna, if you're here for the.
We have one scheduled today yet, if, for if time permitting also, so.
Yeah.
But it looks like our meeting is gonna get a little pretty a little before eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have all those times, so.
Yeah, we can make some of those discussions then.
Okay.
Keep it there in case we need it.
Yeah, we can, I mean, well, are you, uh, zooming into the housing trust? So, tennis would still, but that's just.
And we're doing the website then.
That's the website thing. You can put it down for a work session for eleven, if not, we'll.
Nobody shows up, I guess you won't got that meeting.
Won't have a meeting.
Alright, um, the other business that I have this morning is you wanted to talk about, um, the appointment to the Conservation Board. Um, this will be one person, um, who is term well expired twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight and you have to decide who you want to point to that, with that vacancy.
Well, I will say this, I think we're very fortunate to have a couple qualified or three qualified applicants again, that are willing to get paid substantially for attending. I have not had any calls or recommendations. Does anybody have a preference?
Purpose, I don't know, one does have a bachelor's degree in Horacol too, from Oregon, Oregon State.
And they both appear to be, um, I mean, not lifelong, but local residents anyway.
Yeah.
Local residents. And the other one does, has sat on a lot of boards and.
Yes, you're right, you're right, yeah, she's volunteered for a lot of time. And I guess we're looking for a female to fill that position, is that correct?
We are, I should.
For gender balance.
Correct. And technically, we should probably accept, um, Lori Rowling's resignation before we appoint somebody new, and put that on the agenda, so.
Then how do we do that?
Just.
Well, there won't be an opening if you don't, if you're not. I think she just quits, right?
Yeah, she's out.
The term ran out.
Term ran out, but she doesn't wanna be reappointed. Yeah.
I don't think.
It's just a vacancy now, because she's just gone, it turns over.
So, I would entertain a motion for someone to fill the board, I think we need to, uh, keep a full board if we can.
It's hard to differentiate between two really good candidates.
Sure is. Do we pick out a hat or?
I don't think we're gonna go wrong either way, we pick.
I don't either.
I would make a motion for Ms. Lector.
Second. I have a motion in second to appoint Angie Pique Lector as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried, and again, I wanna thank for everyone for applying and hopefully, uh, you keep in consideration if we are in need at, uh, another time. Did I take the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Alright, my only other question is, do we need to talk about the sprinkler bit? Or is that?
Um, talk to maintenance this morning, they're still in conversation with, uh, repair people.
Okay.
And thinks we're okay to, um, get a recommendation here or maybe even a second opinion. Um, so we thought we're okay that nothing's gonna subsides quickly, so we're still in conversation for that. Hopefully we get that finished here quickly. And is that something that we don't have to pass here as a board, we just, let's just prepare, so. I'll be in conversation or any of us can be in conversation with maintenance and decide what they come up with and I think it's a maintenance decision, correct? Okay.
Right, so what I had for you?
Thank you. Alright, speaking to, I don't have anything else on my agenda, I was just going to, I know Ninn and I were out in Des Moines last Thursday, um, had some interesting conversations. Um, also, we just talked about unfunded mandates a little bit and then in the last Iowa magazine that we had, that Lucas, our legal counsel had a real nice article in there, if you get a chance to read that, so. Um, again, it was even the mailing for these, you know, that the state should have picked that up, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's definitely, it's an unfunded mandate.
Well, it puts a burden on the, on the local taxpayers here that, uh, they, they implement a policy or procedure and it puts a financial burden on the county, so it's, it's, uh, it's just something that we need to discuss and if there's any solution to it, I don't know, but it needs to be brought forward to our local leaders or not local leaders, at state level leaders and, um, this is what we're working with.
There's a cost, I'm sure ninety-nine counties are gonna talk about the cost.
Yeah.
You know, and I can tell you that as of this date, Department of Management doesn't have everything and ready to go yet, so they have a month. I mean, we, we have to have, we are mandated by law to have this set out. So, somebody's gotta put their, they gotta get their, they gotta get going in a faster gear.
The law should, shouldn't be against us if they don't know they're timely in a timely manner, but then they expect.
Things as far as budget stuff.
Yeah, and then have, get it to us and we expect to have it on time, so.
That was a costly delay.
It was a very costly delay, you're right.
Yeah.
And I passed that on to one of the legislators talked about it and she said they're in the process of collecting that, kinda see what the ramifications are, um,
Yeah.
Or, or, and is it what they intended or whatever, so. One point nine billion dollars didn't run.
That's right.
It was a good meeting for us, I think, you know, there was collaboration between other supervisors, a lot of conversation.
And just let me clarify, we do have, we are bonded.
Yeah, we went through this a couple of years ago too.
Just wanna make sure that we, we, Jackson County, we are bonded, we do not have an insurance policy. We have followed the law, we are bonded.
So, we are referring to elected officials. Um.
This is a question.
It, it got brought up in legislative season, session that, uh, requirements and I think you can, you go either way, of course, so basically they can't come to back to me personally to say you're responsible for a bad decision, well.
Yeah.
You know? Or a good decision, what? To get a bonus, yeah.
Good luck.
So, yeah, well, I don't, anyone else have any boards or commissions?
Um, Together We Build is, the advisory board is meeting tonight with the fair board and, uh, the extension council to see if we can hash out a management agreement for renting the building that's together we build, building out, that's that's going on tonight, so hopefully, um.
Did they come up with terms for lease agreement between Jackson County and I know we were working on some terms and you guys were gonna discuss that.
We gotta figure out who's gonna be running the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, first things first, yeah.
We talked about, I, I told them who all needs to have liability coverage and and minimum what it needs to be and, um, the extension seems to think they have it and Together We Build will get it. And, and, uh, and, uh, the fair board, they have it and they're just working the nuances out, but, uh, um, hopefully, hopefully we have a productive meeting tonight, we come out with a, a general structure on how we're gonna proceed that can, that can affect March first, because there's a stack of people waiting to try to rent that building. Whether it's ready on the twenty-sixth, when the first people are gonna come in there, yet to be determined, um, it looks, I was in it the other day and wow. To the layman, it looks like there's a lot of work left to be done, but they're working diligently. The E-N and one board I sent in for you guys, uh, they passed their budget, everything seemed to go, it was a short meeting, it was like, um, fifteen, sixteen, fifteen, twenty minutes mostly and um, everything seemed to be going good, uh, there was an additional budget request, others in the two that were submitted making Bellevue skew and Preston needs credit or something, so. Um, there's a one addition, but other than that, it all went pretty good.
So, any discussion on the com- communications board? I mean, there's always discussion, you know, we're still working through funding agreement for that, so. Um, hopefully we can come up with a reasonable.
Just to piggyback off what you said, Don, um, I did spend some time on Friday with our insurance agent, we visited the law enforcement center and we did visit the Together We Built. Um, trying to get things to bridge over from our builder's risk insurance over to property insurance. Took some pictures, you know, visited with some contractors, had to kinda come up with a percentage of completion of both buildings and that's been submitted to the insurance company for review.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, to figure, we talked about that a little bit also when we did that, when you did that, uh,
Yeah.
Um, you know, that, to me, I, I don't know how the insurance company figures all that, but you know, we have a concrete building with steel studs and drywall, none of that burns. So, I mean, I, you know, does there, is there a consideration in there as far as the cost?
My meeting yesterday with the insurance agent was canceled, but I will be bringing that up to her when we meet next.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly has to come into consideration if everybody's got wood siding or wood interior and, and whatnot, but the flammable product in these buildings are basically self-sufficient.
Whatever people put in there.
You know, I mean, if you had a communication board, so we could, sometime I brought it up to an individual, I said, does it make any sense to go district wide, like? I mean, we are divided in the district, three districts, for us, does it, do you allocate to each district? I don't know if that makes any sense, but. Discussion to be had.
Yep.
Anything else before the board this morning? Um, is the Green Island, is that a work session or is that in on our meeting?
It's a separate, more meeting.
It's a separate meeting, so we will, we can
Adjourn.
Adjourn and then, uh, we'll open up. Adjourn and then uh we'll open up the public or the Green Island.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all. Have a great day.